Alright, everybody ready? Good evening. Tonight is the Selectmen's meeting for March 30th, 2020. Please join me in slinging the flag.
Would you like to lead us to the flag? And I say this very seriously. Future Republicans, what we stand as, one nation, under not individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're trying some new things tonight. We have, uh, some people calling in. Board member Elliot Alessio is teleconferencing in, and she can hear and speak through the mic if you don't see her.
People that are going to be collecting unemployment checks, especially if they're in the food service. Graham can speak better to this, but I'm sure he doesn't pay his people ten bucks an hour. He probably pays his waitresses three or four bucks an hour. The rest there, their money is made through tips, which is generally not claimed, which means they get the lowest amount of money coming to them. It means the stimulus money coming to them is going to be the lowest amount because, or actually the highest amount, but you don't know how that's gonna work out. We've bought some supplies that were anticipated. Don's gonna be presenting you with a proposal to buy some more supplies for a large number. Obviously, that wasn't anticipated. They both got worries about overtime. If they start losing some of the guys to the, um, to the virus, they'll need to cover their shifts with overtime. There'll be a few people working a lot of hours. That being said, yeah, you guys have to come up with money to pay the bills at the end of the year. Where, you know, your fiduciary agents, you can't overextend your budget. And I can tell you, federal money is not coming until after January, January 1st of 2021. It's unless something miraculous happens, which I've never seen. I've done this for 35 years. Generally takes six, uh, eight to 12 months to get your check from the government. That means any money spent right now for the next few months needs to be paid for out of our budget. The general operating budget by December 31st. And by law, you can't go over budget. So, um, I can tell you, there is some money available. You do have what used to be called contingency fund. Um, I don't know what that was budgeted for. And I'll also tell you that with a mild winter, I've gone through my budget, and it looks like I've got about $70,000 in snow plowing, salt, and overtime and sand money available, leaving myself a big enough cushion so that if we get significant snow in November and December, I should still be alright, because obviously you can't spend all my money, and then we have a snowstorm and we don't have money to plow snow in December. I ran the numbers. Looks like, sorry. Looks like we have, uh, probably $10,000 available on overtime, $20,000 in the salt line item, and $40,000 in snow plowing. Because obviously, we budgeted for average winter, and we didn't have an average winter, so. Those numbers leave me enough money, leaves me a balance. For salt, it leaves me about $34,000 to buy salt, October, November, December. And it leaves me about $40,000 to pay for contract plowers and snow plowing. And the line item for overtime, we'll be working overtime for paving projects and whatnot. But that's the money I have available to you guys, to you folks from the Selectmen, to, uh, think about using. Obviously, I hope you use contingency first, but, um, I would suggest we tell all departments that if it's not absolutely necessary to be spending the money, we don't. And be looking for, I think a good number's of 5% from each department had come back and say, "I think we can get away with not spending this." As a Selectman, I think you oughta, maybe 5% is unrealistic for some of these, but you oughta be asking it anyways. That's the budget financial picture that I see. I have done the FEMA paperwork to get reimbursed. Been doing it now for 35 years. I've done all of them. Probably 20 of them, probably brought in a million and a half, the $2 million over the years from presidential declared disasters. And I can tell you, the paperwork is incredible. Tracking is incredible, and the number of bean counters you've gotta get it through so that the GAO and FEMA are happy, so that they write a check and give it to the town of Kingston is incredible. It's pretty intense. So guess what? When are you guys gonna have to do that?
You're not volunteering?
I am not volunteering this time. But anyways, that's what I see. Um, I've got a couple of questions from my perspective, from my budget, that we budgeted money to buy a truck for building maintenance. I'd like to move forward with that, at least go out, get the bid process going. And, uh, the other thing, and I'm, I'm probably gonna move forward anyways unless you're telling me to stop tonight. And we can stop it at any point, but put the paving and road rebuilding out to bid, do a, do a, uh, RFP, you know, at least get the numbers. We're not going to be actually putting the black stuff down for another month or two anyways. Probably, it'd probably be a month bid process, the month after that, so probably two months out. We can always put the brakes on and not spend the money. And there's another big chunk of money that, that is available if absolutely necessary, you know, the world comes to an end here. We don't necessarily have to do any paving this year. There's $400,000 available there. I surely don't recommend that. That's always an option. That's where I see the budget financial, where we have, uh, but you just gotta remember, you spend the money, it's gonna be paid for this year out of the budget. So the money's gotta come from somewheres. We surely didn't predict this, and we didn't budget for it, so that's where we are. Thank you.
So, I guess we'll start from the beginning of that list. But before we do that, um, where are you guys as far as, well, I guess my two questions are, are you running over your budget yet? And are people paying the bills? Like the ambulance calls still being, or is that not even caught up yet?
Uh, so Cindy tracks the ambulance billing, and that usually takes a few months to catch up anyway. So that's kind of a moot point. But, uh, budget-wise, I'm not, uh, over budget. I'm not close to being over budget or running up higher than normal. We haven't really seen a whole lot of uptick on ambulance calls or medical calls. Uh, I think some of the, the public is actually scared to go to the hospital because they don't wanna get COVID-19. So, you know, the, the biggest thing will be if, uh, you know, so it's, it's two different things, is a protected exposure and unprotected exposure. So if one of my guys gets protected exposure, which everyone should be from now on, meaning, uh, you know, we transport somebody, even if they're positive for COVID-19, as long as he's wearing the proper PPE, then he can go back to work after deconning himself and showering and all that stuff. Uh, if they come in contact, like in their personal life, with somebody that's positive or flu-like symptoms, or they're, they're showing flu-like symptoms, they need to be out, uh, for up to two weeks, or, or longer if they test positive. So, uh, it's unknown at this point how many people I'll have out in the next few weeks or months. Obviously, something we need to prepare for, but, uh, that's, it's gonna be a crapshoot, and only time will tell. But as of right now, to answer your question, we're, we're right on track.
Do you have the depth of bench to cover people being out, or?
Uh, not really. Uh, we have a pretty good cadre of per diem guys that we can pick from. Uh, the, the US government has not lifted any sanctions on part-time employees working more than 32 hours a week. So that may be difficult to juggle, but.
So is that an issue you'd like elevated? Well, there's a bunch of politicians who are looking for something to do other than throw money.
Yeah, and I know, like, the governor has, has mentioned it. I know senators have mentioned it. Uh, we're on conference calls three, four, or five times a week. Uh, it's been mentioned there, so I know they're, I'm assuming they're working on it because they've mentioned it all the way down from the president, so.
Point I wanted to make that, um, you need to consider. A lot of people out of work, you're gonna be sending tax bills out in June. Where people gonna stand as far as being able to pay the tax bill?
It's on the list.
That's on the list, I'm sure it is. You know, so if our revenue stream is off, people might be able to pay their bills. That, that also affects the budget, because that means you'll have to go and borrow money. Which most towns do anyways. Kingston's, you know, we, I don't think we've had a tax anticipation loan in 30 years, but that's always a possibility, because it's a process. And, uh, obviously, you could be paying interest on that, which you didn't budget for, so. Money will be available to the town, it's just you have to jump through some hoops, and, and it's gonna cost you. Rather than collecting the money, um, you know, in June, and then the money sets in the bank, and you're actually making interest as you're spending it out until the final payment comes in in December. You'll just have to do a, you know, I don't know, four or five million dollar tat. Actually, it's probably much bigger than that now, today's world. I'm going by old numbers, but significant amount of money if the revenue stream doesn't hold up, so just one more thing to think about.
Yeah, I think we'll have a better idea then obviously come June and see where we're at next. Yeah, we need to discuss that. Don, how are you guys looking?
I had one officer out for a while, and he was now back and cleared. Hold the line. Rich said if, if we start getting some illness within the ranks, we will have to double up and put people on various shifts, which will cost us some overtime. Um, I'm really concerned with PPE. I've been chasing PPE for about a month now. Fortunately, we've got a, a bunch of, uh, PPE for free. I'm asking the board to look at that proposal. It's a new type of, uh, mask. And, uh, I think that may no longer be better for employees for fire, police, and highway. So I did get some of those donated, and I'm asking that we purchase some more, which it could be a decent buy on what they're on the past. So, uh, as you know, PPE is hard to come by. People have been great, they've been donating, uh, a bunch of stuff to us tonight. I guess some of the officers now have picked up a couple of boxes of Tyvek suits that someone donated to us. We've got a, we've got a number of donations. Graham was running low on, on, uh, N95 masks, and I had somebody give me three cases. So I brought those to Graham because he was heated, because he uses a lot more than I do on every ambulance call. I have three or four people that use them. So, so PPE is a real, real concern for us. So I think if we go to these masks, uh, it could be a buy. I would ask the board to consider signing it tonight, so I can pick them up tomorrow and make sure everybody's covered. Richard tried one today, do you think it's satisfactory?
Yeah, I think it's a great piece of equipment. Um, I think it's a good idea for each, each one of the employees to have one. It's their responsibility, it's their responsibility to keep it clean, filters change properly. From my perspective, uh, you know, my guys are not gonna be in a situation where they need to wear a mask, but it's available to them in case they do get in that situation. They'll be expected to carry it with them, because you never know what you're gonna walk up, up to. You know that as well as I do.
Yeah, I think that incidental exposure, if there's a car accident, and they're right there, I mean, you'd wanna have that on hand.
Have, have your guys been tested, uh, fit-tested for the masks?
Are these, uh, if you look at the, uh?
It's still supposed to be fit-tested for the masks?
Well, the answer is no, and you're not going to.
Okay, well.
You're not going to.
So these, these are the regular, regular masks?
Yeah.
So the cushion mask, if you look at the, uh?
No, sorry, the, the thing's in here and it's signed, but it's just, it's still supposed to be fit-tested, whether there's small, medium, and large.
The, uh, the other thing, years ago, I wrote a grant for, uh, for Scott masks, which was the catchers, to actually, I've got those out of the archives, cleaned them up, and that's a backup tool for us. So the offices have a number of different, uh, we've had a number of different people donate different types of respirators to us, and all different kinds of stuff. So the towns and the brewery, we're coming forward, making donations and, and trying to keep us safe, so I really appreciate it.
So, uh, Kevin, to your point, the fit-testing. So we own a fit-testing machine with, uh, for other communities. Um, the problem is that in order to fit-test somebody using our machine, you need to destroy a, uh, actual N95 mask, you need to put a hole in it. So with shortages being what they are, I didn't find it prudent to do that at this point. So.
Okay, well, maybe if we grab these, the disposable ones, just so people have the right size at the very least.
So every day, I've been checking with the state to see what's available and what they're gonna push out to the communities, and it's hit or miss.
Yeah.
So PPE is a major, major issue throughout this whole ordeal for everybody. Hospitals, or fleets, fire, highway, uh, and everybody seems to be bothering for it. Some states end up with more, some end up with none. So, uh, we get involved with that, which is good. Make sure that people are protected, but we're using it, you know, as time goes on too. We've changed a lot of our protocols. Fire will go up to a call, we don't answer them. That's the fire department, uh, indicates to us that they want an officer. At that point, we'll assume that I can win. So we, uh, we're trying to keep as much restrictions, restriction as possible as of going into that home, or being exposed. So that's, that's worked pretty well for you as well.
We've also closed down our buildings, just like the town hall. At the highway garage, the doors are locked all the time. Signs posted on the outside with a phone number to call, and they can call me direct. And we can solve most problems over the phone. If we've got to do a face-to-face, generally, it's out there at their location anyways, and just social distancing, stay away from each other, and talk out the problem, and move on. I mean, we've already had emergency calls where folks have called us, and it's worked over the phone. Just go out and take care of the problem. Whether it's, you know, low-hanging trees, or we had a sinkhole that needed to be addressed immediately in the road, uh, you know, this time of year, that stuff happens, but, you know, you need to call. The phone is monitored between seven and, uh, seven and five by a town employee. And then if that doesn't work, obviously, if it's an emergency, 911. And Rocky M can dispatch me or whatever, give me the message, and we can reach the folks. That, that's really not out of the norm. It's always been like that after hours, but my phone is monitored from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
One of the, uh, one of the issues that, that keeps coming up when we get questioned about, so every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at noon time, we've gone to some of them. So you kept, um, which has as well, that we meet with the entire state, all the different organizations, different communities, all over the state. And one of the things that has come up is people are really concerned as to if we have anybody that's being tested positive within the community. So what we sat on the meeting on Sunday, there was a protocol that they came out with that they're gonna be notifying fire and police that if we get a certain call, whether it be for a, a medical call, or a domestic call, or any type of a call, they'll notify us that that person has been tested, uh, positive in, in that community, in that home, at whatever house number it is.
So is that on top of the screening they were talking about doing over the phone? They're giving you the knowledge someone's tested positive, and they're still doing the screening for 911?
Yeah, so what will happen if you, if you get a test? And that goes to, uh, into the state health, into the health department of the state. So they now have created a list that goes to every dispatch center. And so they'll be able to tell us, whether it be fire, police, going out to a, to an emergency, if someone in that home has been tested positive. So try to keep us safe going out to these different locations. So there's a number of different things, and every day, it's been five days a week now that we, that we, uh, jump on, online and make this communication with everybody in the state. So this is gonna help not only keep the community safer, but the first responders safe. So there's a number of different things that go on every day behind the scenes to, uh, to make things, uh, to work much better for, for the communities and for the responders.
So for the general public, that, that is obviously privileged information. It's covered by the HIPAA laws. The two chiefs will have that information, or can have that information. The dispatcher will have that information, but it, it is not for public consumption.
Yeah, we can't tell you where the locations are. We can tell you that the town does have some positive tests.
Yeah, and, and the conference call today, they did mention that, uh, one of the calls I was on today, they're actually gonna start releasing the information town by town. Town of Kingston has five cases.
You mean if you're gonna have a full roster of town?
Every town, how many, how many people each town.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, so it's, uh, we know, we know we have some, uh, have tested positive in town. Uh, we know, we know the area of town they live in, and so on and so forth. So if we have to respond out there, it keeps the first responders safe. And, and that goes for not only someone that's been tested for a medical issue, but if we go out there for any other type of issue, and they've been tested, put that up, and the flag goes up, you know, get the proper PPE on.
Can I ask a budget question back on, uh, as far as getting money back? Who keeps up with that? Like, there's, there's several voices, and what we signed tonight, they're probably qualified for that.
So I spoke with Cindy, and, and, and I've talked to both Rich and Graham. So what we're doing is we're charging anything that has to do with, uh, to, uh, emergency management. We don't have money in that budget, but we're charging everything under, because that's where we'll be writing the, the bills from, under emergency management.
I didn't notice that the ones we signed tonight were on there.
Yeah, that, so.
Did COVID-19 response?
Yeah, so it's coming out of that account under emergency management. So that makes it easier for Cindy, rather than pick through, you know, 10 to 12 different budgets. She goes to that one budget, and that's where it's all charged.
Okay, so I assume when in doubt, you charge it to that and let them tell you later, no, that doesn't qualify?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, because all this stuff, we don't know what, we don't have any clue what the rent is on. They're saying they're gonna pay for any PPE, which I, I believe they will, 75% of, of the total cost. So we're still gonna be on the hook for 25% of the cost of everything.
So we're, we're keeping all of our, this is the folder that we have for all of our, uh, meetings that we're keeping track of, everybody that's there, um, all of our POs. So, you know, I'm sure the chief, myself, and Rich will get together with the Selectmen uh, when we go to do the paperwork, and add everything together with Cindy, and see if we can get the reimbursement.
Because the Surgeon General is on today, and he said May 4th is a wish list.
Right, yeah, it's gonna be looking at that. So with that, what Graham just said about keeping track of the roster, if, if Phil, you decide on from home, and you're listening on the meeting, somehow you need to convey to Graham or Kelly that's keeping the roster that you're, you're on. So that, because you're not gonna remember five months from now when we're actually doing the paperwork, that, and.
Trying to remember how many times I've signed on last week.
Exactly, exactly. So if you can rack your brains, if you've signed on from home, listened in on these calls, let Graham and Kelly know at the fire station, so they can at least put you on that roster. Because, you know, I can bill you out at 45 bucks an hour, even though you surely don't get paid that much to be a Selectman, but that's, I think that's the number I can bill you out at. Or, excuse me, someone else can bill you out at.
I think that was a voluntary statement.
No, I don't think so.
$2.73 is what it worked out to the last time I did that on it. So, I guess what we need to do, in my opinion, is when we start getting into an overtime situation, we need to have benchmarks that we meet, where you kind of raise it up, the, raise the flag up that, hey, I'm going past my allotted overtime. And then we can make decisions based on that.
Yeah, I'm, so.
Not that we're not, I mean, it's, it's a situation where we have to do it, but I guess how, how tight we have to cinch our belt here is gonna be determined by how much we're going over budget.
So here's some of the issues, and I don't know how you're doing it. So I'm training three brand-new people. And I've been in touch with police standards and training, because they can't act, uh, unless they're in the presence of a certified officer. So I can't put two police officers in the front seat, because it doesn't meet that six-foot setback. So I'm looking to put one of the new officers in one of the older cars to patrol, but not act unless the other officer is there with him. So if he comes across something, sees something, the other, the full-time certified person, or part-time certified person, will respond out there and assist that individual, because you can't act unless you are certified. So those three officers, but, so, so I. So those three officers, but so, so I, I've gotta get them out of that cruiser. But I've gotta also comply with police standards and training rules. So I've been in touch with police standards and training. The other thing that they're doing with the academy. The academy's been changed completely. So everything's gonna be online at the police station. And, uh, that's how they're gonna be doing the academies until this whole mess is over. They'll go up and take the PT test in the beginning. They'll, they'll take all the online stuff and hopefully by then it's over and they'll put all the stuff that they have to be there for at the end of that session.
Okay.
So there's a lot of different changes that are being made. Every day there's something different that we have to kind of jockey around. To give the town more coverage, but also comply with police standards and training rules and the state statutes. So. Um, we've been quite involved with, with, uh, anything to do with businesses. How they want us to address businesses that are operating when they're not supposed to be. Um, on, uh, on someone that has been quarantined, that refuses to do that and how they want us to handle that. And at what point does the state get involved with to have us pick them up? And to bring them to a location if they refuse to quarantine. So every day is something new. So it's, it's a very.
The governor said his president, state, state police are gonna start through towns now and questioning people. Mainly the rioting area and.
Yeah, I, I can, I can tell you that, um, for the most part during the day and night, it's pretty quiet. There are very few people out and about. They still, um, I see a lot of people walking the planes, which is great. I see them riding bikes and jogging. That's great. Um, all those things that they're doing, uh, state park. Um, so I've, I've seen the, at least in the town of Kingston, they're, they're complying pretty well with the, uh, with the order that the, that the governor put out. Uh, which makes everybody safer. I will tell you, uh, in some of the grocery stores, I'm a little concerned. Uh, because I don't see the safety in a lot of the grocery stores.
They're stepping up their game this week anyways.
Yeah.
Week before, not so much.
So I would caution people that do go to the grocery stores that. Um, and I know that earlier in the morning, for, for those that may be over the age of sixty. That, uh, that it's a good time to go grocery shopping, but I'm hearing from a lot of residents that throughout the day, that a lot of people are not keeping the six foot distance and. No PPE or whatever. And they're right. If you can keep it from spreading, it keeps that curve down, which is gonna save a lot of lives and keep a lot of people healthy.
Um. I, I do think one of the more, well. As far as the emergency management side goes, I think you guys, I mean, I've sat on numerous once those calls and I think you guys are on top of it. Obviously the PPE is an ongoing issue. Um. And. We need to meet up with that one. Maybe in a non-public because there'll probably be some personal information revealed in there, but we wanna try and get her to see what she needs beyond what she's currently. Empowered with, because I think that, as Rich said, that's gonna be our next, that's probably gonna affect the town more than anything else is, is people who are affected by losing, you know, not having work, not having income. And you need to be able to step up for that. And I think. In the ideal scenario, we've mobilized the town. You know, people wanna help, people wanna do donations. We've seen it with the masks and things like that. So we wanna try and start channeling that. Um, as best we can while still maintaining safe distances. Um. So.
So I did, I did speak with Ellen when I was putting the numbers together. I'm not speaking for her. You're absolutely right, Phil. You guys need to sit down with her, but just something to consider. And, you know, she opened my eyes up. If there's ten families, this thing lasts for ten or twelve weeks and they need help with. Three months worth of rent. That's ten families times three, thirty months at twelve hundred bucks a month. On the loan, that's thirty-six thousand dollars. That will eat her whole budget right up.
Right.
That's just ten families. There's an awful lot more that potentially could be in trouble. She can speak better to that, but you know, that's just reality and that's just rent. That's not talking about.
Yeah.
Electric bills, oil, you know, so they can buy oil in the fall, so they can pay their, uh, you know, LP gas bill. Whatever. People are really gonna be hurt because they're affected by this and maybe they fall through the cracks and not getting stimulus money for one reason or the other. Um. But. Can't be some real numbers here.
Yeah. Um. Ellie, did you have anything?
Um, no, I'm still at this time. It's, it's been a, a big learning for me and, um. And I think it's got to crowd up.
Anyone understand that?
What did she say?
Try again, Ellie.
We're not understanding you too well.
I said, um, I, I really didn't have anything new to add to the conversation and it's just been a learning experience. For me, um, coming in at this time. So, but I think the town has done a terrific job in terms of responding. Step into the plate. I guess that's the, the right phrase to use. Uh, we're gonna have a lot more expenses with families in need and that's gonna be a critical area.
Yeah, and I think that leads to the next topic is at what, what steps do we wanna take at this time? As far as a budgetary standpoint, because there's a lot of nice to haves that people had budgeted that. Probably don't need to be happening right now with this going on and the uncertainty of, of what our expenditures are gonna be moving forward. Um. You know, whether that's a change to how, what PO level we have to sign off on. Or is it a percentage, as Rich was saying? Um.
Let's say take, take it week to week. Let's take a look at it. We're gonna meet every two weeks?
Why don't we immediately send out a letter to all the department heads and say, you know, we're looking at a serious budget issue. Do you see any place in your budget you can, you know, pull money from voluntarily, like Rich immediately saw that he's got some disposable problem. Now he's got the biggest budget down, so it's a little easier. When you get somebody like the Heritage, they've got nothing to pull from.
Right.
But.
Well, I mean, we've gotta share it across. I mean, obviously he's gonna bear the, the larger monetary front of it, but we, we, everybody's gotta step up to the plate. Whether, whether your budget's a thousand dollars or, or, you know, ten million.
Right.
It's, it's gotta be across the board, but I think, I, I like what you're saying, but maybe just. Uh, people, the liaisons have a direct conversation with your, your department heads that you're. A liaison with and just get them, uh, thinking about that and, you know. It's not going away forever. It's just, let's just hold off for now and, and just make sure that we're planning ahead for that. And, you know, I agree. I mean, it's not an immediate issue, but let's just get everybody thinking about it and.
Well. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I do think that as the board, we should say to our department heads, to every town department. That we expect a five or ten percent hold on expenditures other than for key personnel. Because it's an unusual time for obvious reasons. And I, I think we all should, I think every department should step to the plate and help out. And then if things go well in the next couple of months and it's not as bad and we, and it's, the needs haven't been as great, then that's a different story. But I think we need to go conservative versus at hazard.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just. Giving people the heads up, though it, it's not an issue yet, but bear, you know, just letting people know, five to ten percent of your budget is probably gonna be requested at a minute.
Yeah.
Um. Are there any issues with Rich going up for an RFP for paving? I do think we're probably gonna get a pretty good deal because there's a lot of paving firms that are looking to work right now. Having some inside knowledge on that and. So, I mean, they may be, well, we've got us a pretty good price and asphalt prices are gonna be pretty low because oil's through the floor. So. Does anybody have an issue with him going up a bit on that?
No, I think, take a, let's get it, take a look at it and see where we stand. I mean, the, the, the difference between Rich's budget and Graham's in mind, his is most of it or a lot of it's in material, ours is in people.
Right.
So we can't cut people. Um, you know, that's, that's impossible for us to, to give a cut like Rich could give because most of our budget is in people.
But like he, Rich said, for, for the RFP process, we can get the price back and then we can determine. You know, maybe we don't do it all, we do some, or maybe, you know, whatever, we can play once we have the numbers.
Would you say it's like a month out, two months out?
Uh, it's gonna. If I put it out tomorrow, you're not gonna be opening the bids for at least three weeks. So it's, it won't be ready in two weeks, wouldn't you mean again? So it'll be probably four weeks from now, we'll be opening the bid packets for, um, truck for building maintenance and the paving bids. And the other question I, I forgot to ask in my opening time. Um, Nichols Library, that Warren article passed. Um, we should be mobilizing within the next week or two to go ahead and take care of the steps and the, the stonework on that. Um. Kinda made that. Arrangement already. So are we all right to move forward with that or? Do we wanna put the brakes on, see if we can get the contract to put the brakes on?
I guess the way I look at it is initially it went out as two separate parts of that, the stairs being the most critical. Would he be open to just doing the stairs?
I, I haven't asked because I haven't had a conversation with him for about two, maybe three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, that's critical because the stairs will get ready to fall apart.
Right.
But the rest of the, the rest of the building, I would, I would say that we should hold off until we figure out what's going on. I mean, we got a lot of, we may have a lot of pretty expensive bills coming up as a result of this thing. I mean, if you lose, if you lose half your fire department, police department, we gotta pay people. To cover all the calls and stuff. I mean, that's gonna be an expense in overtime, right? So I would. There's wants and needs.
No, I, I, I just.
So the only thing, the only, and I, whatever, I don't care what decision you make, I'm just. The money for the Nichols building would come out of cap reserve fund, which you guys couldn't touch anyways.
Mm-hmm.
It's not available to you to, to, to rob from, not rob, but move money from that cap reserve line. Cause it's, it's already been put in there for a specific purpose.
Yep.
So it really doesn't affect your COVID nineteen expenses or over expenses that you're going to incur.
Can we borrow from it?
No.
No, and the guy's actually, if it's the same contractor, he's gonna be here, it'd kind of be cumbersome to do it. It's.
More expensive to do.
And it's gonna get more, the damage is gonna get worse. And that building is shut down, yes?
Yeah, there's a little bit of traffic in and out of there. Um, not very much.
Okay. What kind of traffic is going in and out of there?
There isn't, I have not seen more than one vehicle there in the last, last week.
Since we called up all meetings?
Yep, right.
There was one there, I think, Friday.
Yeah, and I think there was one there today and, you know, they've got a computer and that's, you know, they probably do their emails back and forth and. You know, someone's gonna take care of that. It's like this building, this building's gotta stay open.
Right. Well, I guess if we can't touch the money.
Yeah.
Then we might as well get it done rather than mobilizing them twice.
What was the price on that?
Uh, a hundred and twenty-eight. Ellie, you got any issue with that?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, what I can get, I'm having some interference in the, on the broadcast, but what I, I gather is, um. And you wanna still go ahead with the stairs or hold off on the roof?
No, we're gonna do both because it's a capital reserve fund that.
Okay.
Can be touched anyway for this, for any emergency purposes. It's, it's already allotted, so might as well proceed.
Okay. I would have waited till the, the, later in the summer just for cash flow, cash flow purposes only, but not necessarily to not do the project.
Yeah, I guess see what their schedule is and go from there.
He's been awarded that bid already.
Yes.
Direct deposit. Might as well cover that when these guys are here. Um. I know Cindy's concern was. Being able to produce checks if we are physically shut down and unable to keep the town hall open. Um, was there another argument to that Cindy that, or Susan, that Cindy was making that are missing?
Uh, yeah, that's basically it. I believe if she's working from home to be able to process payroll, it's lots easier if she doesn't have to distribute checks. A lot of them are picked up in person at the town hall or put in the mail. Um. Just the logistics of getting the payroll done.
How many of people are we talking about that don't get direct deposit?
There's quite a few.
I mean, ten?
You know. If I could interrupt, given, given that the, um. People aren't going to the banks and services aren't open, then if you ask the, those that are not direct depositing to step up to go for direct depositing, some may. But people have different ways of how they manage their money. So I don't think we can force them to, but we can certainly ask them if those that are not currently. Direct depositing to actually assign the paperwork to do so. But it, I don't think you can, I don't think you can mandate it for everybody, but I think.
And for a new hire, you can just state that we do direct deposit and that's it. But if someone's been getting that and we haven't mandated that before. Um.
We don't, there might be a delay in getting a check. They may jump.
Well, that, I, I guess.
I don't, I don't think you can do that either, not by federal law.
You can't delay someone's check. I think we should go back and ask people. I, I think people can do it temporarily while the situation is ongoing, if they don't wanna see any interruption in their check. But they have to be aware that if they are getting a physical check, there may be a delay that, you know, if something beyond our control happens, they may not be getting a check on Friday. Whereas if they had direct deposit, the money will be in their account.
The other side of this, I don't know why she can't come in one day to do checks if we make sure no one else is.
Well, that'll be a topic of discussion for later in the meeting, but. Um. I guess just if you have anybody, just make them aware of the fact that it's not a guarantee that the paper checks will be produced every Friday. If they wanna do it temporarily, it's our way of guaranteeing that it gets to their account, that they get their money. And. That's the best we can do.
Hard for me.
Everyone's paid weekly.
Pretty hear what you said.
Go, go ahead.
It's, uh, it's, I, I've already made that spiel to my guys and I think one of them's done direct deposit. But I myself like to have a little bit of green stuff in my pocket. So most of my money is direct deposited. I'll take my chance on that. Hundred and fifty bucks a week. If I have to wait an extra week, it's not a big deal to me. But checks need to be written. Town government needs to continue. There'll be no time when the government shuts down town function or state function. That's not gonna happen. And checks need to be written, vendors need to be paid, people need to be paid.
And I fully agree with you, but if the one person who's able, able to do payroll right now and comes down with this. It could be two weeks, she's out three weeks and then where are we?
I, I hear you, but this is, see that. I get the thirty-five years here. I've seen this happen before and I, I don't understand it. Police department has someone cross-trained to take over, Briggs goes down for a month. Graham's got someone to take over for him if he goes down for a month. I do. Um, the board of selectmen, it's a five-person board. You can get, you can run with three. So if two of you get out. Every function in town government needs some redundancy. There can't be just one person and, and I'll, I'll take it to, you know, you have one person that's elected that actually signs all the checks. That's an issue. There needs to be a deputy, uh.
Treasurer.
Needs be appointed. Could be, I don't know if it can be a full-time person. It could be Susan. I don't think it could be, you know, but you need to have. A second person designated and trained on all positions and.
That is further down there, but even if we started on that tomorrow, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Happen today.
Right.
I understand.
Or than anything, you just need, and if they're. A lot of stuff that people thought. Or than anything, you just need, and if there, a lot of stuff that people thought, well, that'll never happen, has happened lately, so, it's just, they gotta be aware of that.
And quite honestly, the way we do business has changed forever now, with this, this pandemic, and we may, we may want to mandate that all, all paychecks be direct deposit, but we definitely need a plan B, we definitely, every employee needs a backup plan, and if Cindy's the only one that can do payroll, we are in deep trouble, quite honestly.
So, with that, um, you guys have anything that you need, or we can provide for you, or you just wanna complain about, or?
Yes, I do, uh, no, one, one-
I want a raise.
One question I had is, uh, so obviously with the town hall, with the fire, police, highway, we're cutting back on non-emergent, uh, calls for service, um, the, we are still getting requests for inspections, uh, we had a call today, and it was my understanding that like, uh, Robert and Pete are not doing inspections, or very limited inspections?
Limited to basically outside inspections, where they can maintain social distance, and it's at their discretion.
Okay, so, we, we had a call today for a unoccupied building, uh, for a occupancy permit, you don't have a problem with my guy going in?
Personally, I have a problem with anybody who's gonna be responding to an actual emergency being taken out by an inspection for a vacant building, so yes, I think in your case, personally, I mean, it's up to the rest of the board, but-
I, I'm just looking for guidance from you, because now, and to let the public know, because, not that I don't mind looking like the bad guy, but if, uh, the call that we took today, the plumbing inspector signed off on the electrical inspector, so now it's our turn, so I just, I want some guidance from you guys on whether I'm sending my inspector out to-
Well, I think, I think it makes sense, it's either all or none, because that process will stop, so, if we're gonna send the building inspector out, the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, you do it, I see it on the nine-one-one numbering, so, we're either, we're either gonna do inspections, but, and like you said, in a safe way, you know, if it's, if it's some new construction, or that it's an out, outside, you know, inspection, makes it safe.
Well, then, I think you also have to pay attention to what inspections for, if it's to occupy a business or something that they can't open anywhere.
That's right.
It's not a foreign pressure.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and again, that is, to the public, that needs to be some discretion on their part, where people are coming into the, it's an emergency, they've gotta register their vote, sorry, that's not an emergency, your jet ski that you haven't used in two years, you don't need to come to the town hall to register that, you don't need to, you know, people also need to ex, exercise a little discretion on their part of what constitutes an emergency, but, I mean, a, as we've extended that to the inspectors, I think it would be your call, I was, as the chief, you know, if you're okay with sending your guys there, then-
I, I would just say, I mean, I hope we've gone to all the inspectors and talked about, you know, keeping that distance and everything else, we also gotta keep the economy going where it can go, for contractors doing work and all that stuff, so to go into an empty building, you know, as long as he keeps his, you know, six-foot distance of the person, I don't see a problem with that, everything else, you know, you, I, I would hope our inspectors are smart enough to just, you know, assess each sit, situation, you know, can this wait, or can it not wait, but we also gotta keep the economy going where it can, such as the guy doing the work up on the Nichols building, uh, because otherwise, if we stop everything, it's gonna hurt the, uh, economy even more, some things gotta go, we just gotta be a little bit flexible in that.
Thanks for your question.
Sure.
So, there is one other issue, well, you've got a black eye today, Graham, your department, and, uh, on Facebook, because we won't go into someone's house and replace the batteries in the smoke detector, that's a public service that the fire department has helped out before with, probably not something we wanna be doing now, and, uh, you know, the answer today was no, and, obviously, there's folks home, you don't know if anyone's sick in that house or not, so, uh, the decision was made, you know, it's, that's not an emergency, and we probably shouldn't be using, utilizing resources that could become critical down the road, potentially lose employees for something crazy like that, so, um, I think you made the right decision, support you a hundred percent, uh, it, it, things have changed, you can't, you just can't be doing stuff like that, so.
I mean, they've already go into people's houses for any number of things, I, I get it, but I look at it, i, is it an emergency, or is it not an emergency, they go without smoke detectors and something happened, you know, it's just-
It's their responsibility, it's not my responsibility to come to your house and change this.
We could talk about this later, but I don't think we should change batteries and smoke alarms, and what if, what if we go out and change them and the smoke alarm fails, what liability do we have?
It's kind of under the, yeah.
So, we, we've always done it as a service for the town, we do it for residents, we do it for, uh, the residents at Landplay or Estates, we go there once a year, and they give us a list, and, you know, if we pull the detector down, it's out of date, and we let them know, um-
That's one thing to do, for the elderly, but to do it for the others-
Right, that's the all or none, if, so, disabled, elderly, you know, somebody that doesn't want, is afraid of heights, so, but, uh, uh, the situation today is, we had a new guy on this morning, uh, he went to somebody's house with a ten-foot step ladder, uh, wasn't able to reach the cathedral, cathedral ceiling detector-
I'm gonna stop you right there, it's not a problem.
All right, so, I, bottom line, because we've shut the buildings down to non-essential, uh, and non-emergent issues, uh, I felt it prudent to not send my guy out, that if he goes out for two weeks, or brings a contaminant into that household on his body, you know, so, it, we're, we're in trying times, and we're in unprecedented times, where we just need to be over cautious, and that's what we're doing.
A, and at the end of the day, you are the one who has to make that decision.
Sure.
You know, a, and, but I think, an emergency versus a nice-to-have are two very different things, especially in this environment, and we need to focus on emergencies right now, emergency services, not part-time electricians who pop batteries in for people, um, and it's something we've done in the past, but it's, I, your fault, but I don't think it's something that we should do in the future, or for the immediate future.
You know, that, it's a nice service that the fire department's done to the community, for the older folks and the general, we may wanna set up a day of caring from the fire department to do that in the fall, during fire prevention week, you know, when we're not in the middle of a pandemic, so, it's something to think about, a different way to provide the service, 'cause I know that's something the department likes to do, but maybe we need to do it at a different time of year, do it annually, do it for a number of homes.
Or better yet, if there's someone in the community who has a ladder and wants to go around and help people, we can get their name, if they wanna call the fire department, and we get a call like that, they can go and do that, and not threaten our customers.
Correct, correct. It's very hard to ask a fireman, any of T's under the current circumstances, to be putting in batteries, quite frankly, but, it's, it's my two cents.
But no good deed goes unpunished, clearly.
That's, no question.
Anybody else have anything?
I do. So, Cindy and I have been watching the oil and propane prices.
Oh, just for these guys?
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Yeah, I saw that.
So, oil, oil right now, we can tie in at a dollar seven-five-six, propane at a dollar point zero-zero-eight.
That would probably be some money we could pick up on the budget, if we might get it.
So, with the, with the price of propane and oil down as far as it is, we've been watching it for a couple of weeks, I've been talking to the school, they bought in, so they buy in two, two times, they buy in halves, and, uh, it's gone down quite a bit, the propane has, 'cause I'm watching the propane real close, uh, it's gone down considerably to a, to a dollar point zero-zero-eight, so at some point before it, you know, we may want it to dip down even a little bit further, maybe, but at some point, I would ask the board to give Cindy and I permission to tie in for this next coming season, once it gets low enough.
What's the deadline on that?
Um, it goes day to day, so it's, it's, uh, we, we call in, we see what it is, if you don't tie in, tomorrow it could go up, ten cents down, two cents, whatever, every day it fluctuates, not, not a whole bunch right now, but, uh, that's what we usually do, we watch, we call in, see what the market's doing, and buy in.
Typical, like the end of April, we use, we usually do it?
Yeah. So, I guess, uh, you know, if you want to give Cindy and I permission to do that, rather than wait two weeks to see, I mean, if it, I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna do too much better on propane, it may go a little bit further down, but-
Typically, once it starts getting warm is when they dip, because they want the business more.
Yeah, I'd be willing to let a couple, at least two more weeks, see what happens, it's not gonna go up that much.
Yeah, so-
There's a lot of things in the Mideast right now driving everything down, if any of that gets changed, it'll start right up quick.
Yeah, anything, yeah, so, I'm just making you aware that it's, it's down considerably, it would be a large savings to the town, uh, we keep watching it.
What do we lock, what did we lock in last year for propane?
Uh, sixty-eight, one sixty-eight?
Yeah, one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine.
So, it's higher, it's way higher than this.
Yeah, so, that's-
Well, you really think that the price is gonna drop more in the next two weeks?
It's gone down in the past, in the past two weeks, it has gone down, I wanna say eight, eight cents maybe, eight or ten cents, so we watch it, um, we watch it every few days, so, whatever the board decides, you know, if you wanna give us permission to tie in-
I think we should give them permission, so if it starts back up, then jump on it in a second, 'cause, once it starts up, it's not gonna come back down, more likely.
Correct.
Good.
Do you want to form a motion, or just-
I would entertain a motion for that.
I would authorize, um, Chief, Vice Chair Briggs and, um, Finance Director to keep an eye on the market, and when they feel most reasonable to lock in oil and propane prices at the town of Kingston to do so.
Second. Uh, I gotta give each of my role call.
Yes.
So, do I read everybody's name on, they said their own name?
Uh, hmm, I think everyone who weighed in, we're all able to.
They really should give the name.
What's that?
The person, the, the audience, we have to know who's voting, how.
Okay, you first.
Okay, you want me to start the parade?
Yeah.
I vote yes, Elliot, yes, you vote yes.
Don Briggs, yes.
Richard Wilson, yes.
James, yes.
Elton, yes. Unanimous.
Yes.
Um, thank you, sorry, covered on that, um, I'm gonna, I'm all over this, but I'm gonna save one, as far as the access to server, can save that for the end.
Okay.
The, I, 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 um, so, as most of you guys are aware, DRA has not approved the warrant yet, seven, eight, and nine, um, so there can be no, there can be no expenditures for the fire station beyond the capital reserve fund and impact fees until it is approved. Um, Sumner and DRA are going back and forth on this, because DRA owes us some information, essentially their position is, they are going to disqualify number seven, which would make eight and nine root, but, in their opinion, the select board has been given the authority to expend funds as necessary, and as such, we would still be able to, um, put the money towards the bond, or towards the fire station above and beyond the bond, um, the other side of that is, we could still go for the bond for the amount as presented by the taxpayers, and as this is getting sorted out, that can be done at a later date, so, that's currently a legal limo, there's nothing we have to decide at this time, the thing we kinda need to start thinking about, though, um, Brad Maxwell contacted me regarding getting money to expend that money, um, we have to liquidate it into cash, and obviously, right now, it's not the ideal time to be doing that, um, so, what their financial people need to know is when we're anticipating needing that money, so I can say this will have to be resolved before we, um, line up that money, but, again, we can start construction with the bonded money, and maybe that works out as the economy picks back up, and things start to recover, we can start liquidating that money, and, 'cause we've taken a major hit on that, I'm sure, I don't know what the numbers are.
So, the meeting, the last meeting that we had, um, I think Kent Walker was gonna generate a letter, but, before anything can really start, the real, the first thing that needs to happen is removal of poles and new poles installed, so that's, that's gonna be the first thing that has to happen before any construction at all, so, um, I'm waiting for a letter from, from them or from the board, uh, for me to go pay a personal visit to Consolidated Communications, who, um, actually owns the poles, and will set the poles, and then Unitil, who's a owner of the poles, and they'll do the transfers, so if we don't, if we don't do that pretty quick, then nothing will happen, you'll be out of that next season, so you won't be able to make any move on anything, so the first thing that has to happen is, somebody's gonna shake the trees to do the, the changeover of all the poles, switch them from one side to the other, put new poles in, do that whole makeover, so with the, with the situation we're in today, I'm not too sure when, when they would do it, so it's something we're interested in starting this year, either, either fire, or the board will need to generate some paperwork, preferably letters, and I'll hand carry them to both Unitil and to Consolidated Communications, and see what their build-out looks like for the summer, so if you don't hit that construction season, they're not gonna be doing anything.
I, I guess my question on this is, I know there was a finance committee within the fire station building committee?
Yep, there is.
Um, I would like to think that they would've allotted from the capital reserve fund and the impact fees, what of that is going towards the demolition of the House on Rock, Graham, and those?
That's, that's all set to be done, what they're doing with the house, they're going to, uh, practice with it, drill with it, and then, a certain date Graham has picked to burn it, as part of the drill, and that will be the demo for that, as far as anything else, they can't move forward until something happens with, with the, uh, power poles and, and changeover of that, that has to happen first.
And none of that is under balance responsibility as the, uh, project manager? All the utility is on us.
It's gonna fall on us, so, and I told them I'd be willing to hand carry those to where they need to go, and get, get the dates, and talk to them, so the longer that goes out, the longer this is gonna delay what, what's gonna happen there, so I know that's, that we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, and, um, so that's kinda what's gonna be the holdup right now.
Fire Department, Briggs, Wilson, to generate a letter from the selectmen, press on the urgency of the matter, so we can get our station built.
Should be two, one to, one to Consolidated, one to Unitil, so I'll hand carry it to both of the-
And then we could all sign it, or you could decide to have Phil sign as chair.
Yep.
I think they work this so to-
Yeah, the, uh, I, I think that's in our best interest, just if there is an economic slowdown, is everything pointing to, again, could be cheaper than it was funded for, and we can take advantage of that, so.
Always thought on that.
You good with that, Elliot?
Yeah, and what, what I was saying before you move on, we, shouldn't we start the bond process no matter what, because, well, the rates be down even more than the- no matter what because what the rates we down even more than they were when we met in March or at the Swiss Liberty? And even if, but what we really need is a letter from DRA saying we can, because of Article Seven, we can move forward on the project, and shouldn't we at least be getting the bond, or done so we can move forward there, and then, and when we, when we get the letter from DRA saying yes, seven authorizes the board to do what they need to do to reduce the amount of the bond, and everything is still flowing along? Am I making any sense on that?
Yeah. Um, I, I guess that'll have to wait, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be forever for Sumner and the DRA to get to where they agree on that, but I think once we have that in hand, that is a good point, that we should, we should kickstart the bond paperwork at that point.
Yeah, Sumner wants it in writing to make sure that what DRA is gonna say, that we're gonna follow what they're gonna say. But if, if Unitil comes back.
It shouldn't stop us.
If, if Unitil comes back to us and says, hey, we're not gonna be able to do it this year, you know, or whatever, then that, that's gonna be a problem. So I think you need to know that right up front.
Do we have to use them, or can we use like J C Reed, you know, J C R?
Their territory. So they own half of the poles and Consolidated owns half of the poles, so they swap off, Consolidated does the pole setting in Kingston, like Unitil will do it in Newton, so they own, they both own the pole, and they, they lease part of it to Comcast, you know, to allow them to hook onto their pole. Um, so I think that's critical because that's gonna tell you what's gonna move forward, what isn't, and the sooner that happens, the sooner we're gonna know what, what they're gonna tell us.
Why would they, for an emergency services upgrade, they would put us to the top of the list?
Uh, I can tell you that, that they're doing some really, some really interesting things now, they, they'll send out, for instance, a utility truck, a bucket truck, and you'll only see one person in the bucket truck, and they won't have another person riding with them now, they'll, they, they've rented vehicles, and they, they follow them to wherever they're going, so there's a lot of different things they're doing, uh, to protect, and they're only to protect their employees, but they're only doing certain specific things now, like emergency calls, and they're doing some, some work, but, but they're, they're not. So I, I would wanna know that upfront, that, yeah, we can do it, and this is what we can do, and this is the cost of doing it, or no, we can't do it.
I got you.
And I think that's really gonna drive the boat.
I was just gonna say, when you see those other companies, they're contracted by them, well, you gotta, you gotta notify them, and they may outsource it, but you gotta go to them.
Right. No, I, I hadn't thought of, obviously, keeping the grid up and running and keeping everybody healthy, and that outfit is probably better. Okay, um, so yeah, if you guys wanna get that letter together, I can sign it.
Yeah, explain, you have to explain to me what.
Sure.
What you want in there.
Are you, are you in tomorrow, or?
Probably, uh, tomorrow afternoon, yeah.
Yeah, I'll come over.
Okay.
Um, so the next thing there is a tax anticipation note, I'm assuming that was what Rich was referring to as far as we have shortfall in our collections, um, it's just something we're gonna have to keep an eye on. And on that same vein, um, I'll jump ahead again. Everybody has a copy of the, or does everybody have a copy of the?
No, that's the only one.
Okay.
It's the preliminary list.
These are our delinquent tax letters that are gonna go out.
Do you have one public comment when you get to that?
Thank you. Mini liaison reports, I think this will be free.
He just did it on fire, that's probably been the only meeting.
Yeah, conservation's canceled, I spoke with everybody, that's been canceled, um, just fire. It's all I've had.
Everything's canceled.
Okay. Public comment?
I just had one note from Glenn Kopfman, who was listening in when you were talking with, um, Rich about Human Services, um, wanting to know if the town is considered establishing a fund for people to donate to for residents in need, or maybe it would just be a donation to the Human Services Department. Take that under.
Yeah, that's a great question, and, um, I guess the question will be to Cindy is how we could set something like that up, so it's accounting-wise managed properly, um, and then the other part is how we handle donations, obviously, you know, we wanna make sure that things are sanitized before anyone comes into contact with them. Do you have time to meet with Ellen tomorrow?
Sure.
I think rather than drag it out this meeting, Dawn and I can get some answers and, and have some deliverables on that.
What, for food, food product and stuff?
Food, uh, monetary donations, people wanna give gift cards or anything, you know, it's, I, I think all those things are gonna be things that we're gonna need.
Yeah.
And, you know, people wanna help, is the impression I get.
So one thing that's gonna start happening, just for the public's information if they don't know it, so the school's been delivering out meals, uh, every day, and I believe it's tomorrow it's gonna start at the baking school for those that are in need of food, that they're gonna pull around behind baking school, I believe they're putting food baskets together for them, so maybe that's something Ellen could contact, uh, someone from the school and speak to them about, maybe rather than have them come to two different places, if we could, if there's a certain amount of food that they're looking for, and we, maybe we, maybe some of the people that we would be giving stuff to aren't aware that this is happening, and they've got kids in the school, maybe we could, you know, donate some product there so they're only having to go to one place at one time. They're actually going out, uh, they're wearing P P E, and they're going out to the car, and they're giving that stuff, they're not getting out of there, coming into the building, so maybe that's something we can tie together with the school if that's easier for Ellen, I would wanna talk to Ellen about it first, but, uh, to make it a lot safer.
Yeah, absolutely. Is that it for public comment?
That's all I got.
These are all tax liens.
Yep. Um, Sandborehead, we used up our initial five thousand dollar prepayment, and I guess we'll go with a motion if the board wants to allot another five thousand dollars to continue on with that, their services.
I'd say they did a, a pretty good job for the town, personally, I think they did.
I, I think, um, we were able to call them, I think they, they've been pretty liberal with giving us information, um, and we did budget for it anyways, another five thousand, so I'd make a motion to approve, um, five thousand dollar, um, to Sandborehead for contract services.
Motion by Kevin, selected by Rich, roll call vote, or, I'm sorry, any discussion?
A quick question, is this for the old high school campus?
It is not, this is for the, uh, this is the engineering firm who's, uh, basically consulting with us for the P F O A response to the D E S.
Okay, okay, got it.
So we had a testing agent, or we had a testing outfit, uh, Stan Tech that had done a, a series of tests, but these guys are actually engineers who kinda interpret the data and bit us a little more, um.
Okay, I'll say, I, I know what you're referring to, yes, thank you.
Oh, okay, I'll put you down, Elliot Lassio is a yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Don Briggs is a yes?
Rich Wilson, yes.
Kevin St. James, yes.
Elkoon, yes. Um, the testing list is there, the open position, I believe needs to be a non-public.
Get a couple more things if I could bring it up?
Yeah, uh, just one sec. And then the, uh. Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, we kinda ran into a, to a little bit of an issue, uh, last week relating to water.
Oh, um, yes, the Monad Dock is apparently running into difficulties because they're being pressed into more service.
Right, so what happens with more and more people out of work and out of school, people consuming more water? So some of the homes we've been providing water to were running out, so one of them was, was really out of water, so I gave up two of my five gallon jugs at the P D for this person, well, twice we did that, but, uh, um, so I would say that's something we probably wanna talk about, reconsider that, the amount of water that they were using when everybody was at school and working and all of that, now everybody's home, they're consuming more water, so we wanna talk about, do we increase the amount of water that we're sending to these homes that their, their, their levels tested higher, um, something we probably wanna discuss, um.
I think we have to, um, but maybe we should do, before we explain to do stuff, we should have Monad Dock contact each individual one to see what they'll need.
I don't think they can, they can't provide it.
The problem is not, okay, that's the only call that I got so far, I'm anticipating I might get more, but the problem was that Monad Dock could not get down here for a month to deliver anything else, that's what they told this one person.
Who?
So, uh, and our local provider that we get the water from doesn't provide gallon jugs.
Five gallon?
He does the five gallon, the big things, and he, they don't like to install a bubbler unless it's a longer term commitment, commitment.
So I guess what I can do in the case of an emergency, if the board chooses to do this, I'll continue to keep a couple of extra five gallon jugs around and make sure that that person gets them if they run out, if that's what you wanna do, or do you wanna readdress it with, with the company that we've hired to do it?
Has anyone spoken to them directly, or is it just?
I did, 'cause I had a couple different things that people who called them about what was leaking, truck leak oil in their driveway, and he just said, we're, we're just really pressed because there's a lot of demand for water, that was what he said. It seems like a long time to not be able to deliver, so I can follow up if you'd like, or with other companies that maybe we could back up, have us back up.
Yeah, I mean, if they can't meet the demand, we're, um, that's not gonna work.
Right, if they're out of water, they're out of water.
Right.
So I, I just, do you wanna do a backup plan, do you want us to contact them to see if they can deliver more water in the next monthly drop, uh, those that are, that are running low?
They're, they're supposed, the people with the water are supposed to be contacting them when they need more, I don't know that they come automatically.
Okay.
Um.
It's just, it's, it became a problem, wanna make the board aware, we took care of it? Um.
Hopefully, it's a temporary problem, I would say, but.
Hopefully, we don't know how long people are gonna be out of work and, and out of school.
So if we buy that land up there with the water source, can we put that under payment bonds?
I think we'll talk to company about that, because that's one less exposure you have.
Whatever, I mean, it's up to you guys, whatever.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we should be, that was an emergency situation that we used for that one time, but if they can't meet the demand, then we need to find someone else.
Yeah, and plus those big jugs aren't for everybody, and a couple, whatever, they couldn't lift it.
The other thing, I got a call, I received a call from, uh, Glenn Greenwood about the car dealership, one one twenty-five in the line.
Yeah.
He said, he said that's good to sign, they're good to go with it, uh, they have no problem with him doing that, and asked that we sign it.
Yeah, um, I've got correspondence here at the end, or I guess I didn't time to go through it. Uh, yeah, I've got that right here, and, uh, he came into the planning board, they discussed everything, and they were all set, so if the board is okay with it, I'm gonna assign this for him for the state. Uh, the other thing is, we had a, uh, application for elderly tax credit that didn't qualify.
One of them's elderly, yes, yes, in that way, uh, the, it's above the income limits.
Yeah.
We can take a look at it.
So that's here, if anyone wants to look at that, um, there was another one that did qualify that was going around. Still waiting on their repeater, and then, uh, Waste Management contacted us, apparently they were waiting to hear from us. I, I don't think our position has changed on that, has it?
Actually, Mark said he was gonna call them, so obviously he did.
He did not, that was his basis for it, so, um, I'll let him know that.
So did we make Sumner aware of that, um, last meeting we had with Waste Management?
Yes.
Um, and he responded to what?
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward Waste Management their follow-up email to him, and, you know, he's, he's got a strategy, or not a strategy, he's got a position, and they have a position,
Then I would think we would respond to him after we talk to Sumner, or Sumner can respond to it, right?
I, I would think Sumner should respond, and if need be, stop an injunction or something.
I don't think the injunction's gonna happen, but I think, yeah, the, uh.
We don't want the, um, what's the word I wanna use, to go to arbitration, we don't want to do that.
Well, it, I read some of the material, looked like they had some standing in terms of their ability to recoup some serious losses, but given.
Standing.
As far as, I don't know, but.
Something that was industry knowledge in twenty fifteen, and they entered into a contract with us in twenty eighteen, trying to claim that this was a surprise to them and, and changed everything, and it's complete.
Alarkey, yeah, we're gonna do it too much, I would think.
Well, given that the letters are dated twenty nineteen, it's probably moot anyways, right?
A meeting with Pete was.
What?
The letters from Waste Management dated February twenty nineteen, not twenty twenty.
I think the particulars, I don't, we probably.
I'm sure it was an error, but I mean.
All right, we can, Elliot, why don't we, we'll address that in a non-public then.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a legal contract matter. But there's, I think there's some additional information we wanna discuss about that.
Yeah, I just know when Pete came in here, Pete pushed it out, and then we discussed it in.
He said that he had, we, he had heard from the town, and we stood where we felt we should be, which was, we don't owe you any money, because we signed a contract, we didn't sign it, but the previous board signed a contract, and we're following through on what the contract said, we don't owe you more money, right? I mean, that's the.
Nothing changed.
Right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Is everybody okay? I did not copy them all again, I sent them all by email, and I usually copy them in your packet, if anyone wants to look at them again, I do have a copy here.
I just.
You've got the non-public.
Make a motion to approve the meeting that's both public and non-public of, uh, March sixteen, March nineteen.
Second.
Uh, I made just one quick, it's for the non-public, uh, got a description of an organization, um, she, other than that, it's nothing else.
So you can do that with them?
Do you seal the non-public meetings for infinity?
I'm sorry?
Do, do, when you have non-public minutes, do you seal it for forever?
I think they are.
Or to regain certain?
Typically, it's a year unless we specify otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Forget, I lost my other page, but.
Okay, all those in favor?
Kevin St. James, yes.
Rich Wilson, yes.
Don Briggs, yes?
Elliot Lassio, yes.
Elkoon, yes. Unanimous. All right, um, so this is probably gonna get into the non-public realm of this as well, um. I was under the impression that we had established that the town hall would remain open by appointment only, access to the town hall would be limited by appointment. Access to the town hall would be limited by appointment, uh, on an emergency case-by-case basis. And today, that wasn't the case. Some people had decided to work from home, 'cause I spoke to four board, four members of the board of selectmen and nobody knew about it. So, I don't know, I don't know if this falls into a non-public, because it would be disgusting.
I think talking about the town hall hours, I think that's okay. Uh, it's not really affecting town hall hours because we're not open anyway. There was some discussion that we then pursued ways to make that happen so that employees who needed to or, uh, felt uncomfortable working from home, uh, they could do so. And we did have, um, Scott, the IT guy, I forget his last name, um, set us up so that we can, um, access the server from home. We can call in and get our phone calls from home. There's not a whole lot happening at the town hall that, you know, I think, especially Cindy and I can do probably ninety percent or more of our jobs from home. Tori would need to be in the office except for she's not able to take the public or, um, permits right now, except by mail. So, um, yeah, I, I thought the idea was to wait and talk about it tonight, but, um, when everything fell into place, um, and they, they felt like they would rather not be in the public space anymore than they have to, they, um, could stay home today.
So, are there calls being forwarded to a phone that come in here?
We can call into the phone system and access our messages.
Or nobody answers the phone?
No one answered.
No one's, no one's answering it, but they can leave a message, so, um...
See, the other, the other issue is, um, if T M E's coming and she feels uncomfortable completing the building alone, so that's a product to our attention. So, we, and she couldn't get in to use the, the postage machine.
Right, and, and, yeah.
She called and I came over, I think you were already here, Richard, I got in.
This is something we talked about today, where maybe we could take turns coming in and work a couple of days a week just so that there's always two people.
So, can you? I know that your, your job is, what about, what is, uh, so Tori's not issuing any permits now?
We're taking them in via email or mail. And they can be processed. The, the problem is the inspection piece of it, I think, is what's slowing things up. There haven't been a lot that I'm aware of, but there will be, we're still trying to complete that process. Tori also does the deeds that come in from Rocket Hand for a disreach, she can do that from home and keep up the avatar system, she has access to that from home. But the building permits are, are a little bit stalled.
So, how many people actually come into the building on, on the other side, your side? A week, how many people actually come in that you need to do business with in that?
For me?
For anybody in that office?
Well, right now, um, we've been, if anybody has to drop something off, we have the outdoor drop or we tell them to mail it, or we tell them to email it. So, very few issues. Tammy's the one that still needs to process a lot of registrations and she has been making limited appointments. She doesn't want to do that if she's only wanted in the building, understandably, so...
What I thought what we were doing was giving everybody access from home to work from home, but we're gonna always have one person here to answer the phone and rotate the people.
I don't remember that. I remember us saying at town hall, "The door's gonna be locked, but people can call at any time and be able to access everyone." That, that was the only difference. We're locking the door and Tori issuing permits would be on a case-by-case basis. Um, Tammy answering her calls for town clerk stuff would be on a case-by-case basis.
So, you're saying everybody would still be in the building?
Yeah.
Well, then that brings all the six-foot rules and everything.
This, this, it's only four people. You can keep six feet in this, in the whole basement.
Well, and Susan doesn't need to interact with the public and Cindy really doesn't need to either. It's not, those are two positions that we had discussed working remotely, if they could. But, I think, at a minimum, there should be two people there and someone should be answering the phone in both locations, if that's the instruction we're giving. Because people, a lot of people don't leave messages. Someone could be at the door, have a question, and they needed to answer that and if...
Yeah, that's true. And we would have to direct all the calls to one phone then, 'cause we have three different extensions.
And if Tammy's there by herself, even just by herself in the office, someone else, you know, there's other people there, we can't forward everything to her because...
So, are the inspectors still coming in then? So, the two inspectors, are all inspectors or no inspectors?
Robert is working from home as well.
Okay, Peter is as well?
Yes.
So, no inspectors from it?
Can't have Tammy by herself, that's not right.
I didn't think she said.
What was that, Ellie?
I don't feel we should have Tammy in there by herself.
Right.
Right.
You, you shouldn't, Tammy shouldn't be by herself.
No, and, and a-again, the two inspectors are in the, the risk category, you know? So, that's, they don't need to be in the office, you know? 'Cause there's no inspections to be done and I just...
I did tell Tammy today if she had anybody that needed to get in for an appointment to call me and I'd come over here while they're, you know, when they came. It's just putting somebody here for safety more than anything.
With, with Tori and I could take turns coming in, um, you know, I don't, I can, I can be here.
So, you're, you're really not getting anyone at the door, right?
No, I mean, they come to the door, they read the sign, they go, "Hey..."
So, more, more, more is, uh, answering, answering the phone?
Answering the phone, yeah, and I agree that should be done. I mean, we can access our messages, it would be nice if people got a live person.
I mean, if someone needs legal information from a property file and nobody's there and it's, I mean, that's something that could potentially be an emergency because I just think we can't just close the town hall. I mean, it is closed, but it is open. People can call with questions and I think if there's a valid concern that someone's raising with regard to safety, if they feel that there's not enough P P E or there's some social distancing thing that we're not allowing for, but in the past two weeks, I hadn't heard of anything that was a concern for people. If, if there is, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't think the board's unsympathetic to that, I just... I have a hard time telling some people to stay home, but then like, "Hey firefighter, why don't you go in there and just, you know, get coughed on and..."
Yeah, I think we're all, we're all nervous and we're all trying to be very careful. Um, Tori has an elderly mother that she helps take care of, um, you know?
So, the only, I just saw this tonight, and the only, the only thing I have a concern about now is seeing Primex, I think I just saw this tonight in the folder, you know, if you all read it from Primex. So, after reading this, it says, "Remote workers, if you have an argument that's so serious, you consider allowing employees the option to work from home." Tammy's playing consideration and such and such. So, another thing we could do, if they're not seeing many people at that door, but it's not gonna help Tammy on the other side, if we need two people here. So, if Tammy were shutting her side down, then I would say, "Why don't we just, we call forward Rich's calls to our phone." You know, so we answer Rich's, Rich's calls at, at the PD as well, um, as, as at the Iowa grad. So, I'm sure we can do the same thing with those numbers to, we would have to know where we're gonna call forward them to, if someone's gonna answer them during the day, like your house, Tori's.
If only one of us was gonna be in that side for a certain day, put all the calls to one phone.
Yeah, so they'd call forward to either your house or, or Cindy's house or somebody's house if they weren't gonna be in the office. That way, the phone would be answered.
I didn't even consider forwarding to home, but we could.
Well, I mean, I mean, so I'm just saying, if this thing gets even worse, or it is not, and, and we're not gonna let anyone in the building?
I, I thought we didn't say we weren't gonna let anyone in the building, it's gonna be a case-by-case. I, I would think at the very least, there should be two people downstairs. Uh, you can do it on a rotated basis, but they have plenty of six-foot distance. Um, and, well, we said to the people, what, I mean, as Rich said tonight, government still has to run. We could limit it and it's a case-by-case, what they're opening the door for. But I think at the very least, two people should be there. And the last direction that I heard was two weeks ago, and we just said, "We're closing the door and everyone's gonna answer the phone." I don't know where we got to where we are today, but...
Here. You say what? Here, that's what's putting me where they are.
And, and again, I understand that, you know, it, it's can be scary, but there are guidelines and, you know, steps that we've taken. I, I, again, if, if there's something that people don't feel we're addressing, you know, we, we can address it, but nothing's changed in the threat level in this area, that, you know, and I think more of the business is closing down, it's because every state around us was closed. We're gonna have a million people coming here 'cause they're bored, but...
Well, there, there's fear, but there's also the, um, directives coming from the state. Nonessential employees shouldn't be going to work, I mean, you hear that every day. So, we're thinking, "Okay, we're gonna prepare to work from home," and we are. I mean, the town is still running. People are being called back. Um, I have my laptop with me at home, I answer all my emails, I check my phone regularly. Um, I, I agree, it's better if you have at least one person on each side so that the phone is being answered in real time and, you know, we can try to take care of that. But I think the idea was that we, we can handle it from home for the most part, so we're trying to make that happen in case it had to happen.
The other way of looking at this is if anybody does get an exposure and if they're down there and passing and they pass it to another person, they could shut down, hold down all if they're not rotating.
Well, I mean, you know, what Tammy's doing is, she's alternating with one of her people and one of us seem to be back to work, but, um, I, I think at a minimum, as Rich brought up, we need to start cross-graining on the, the payroll stuff before we, you know, we need to have two people able to do that, and right now, we only have one. So, I mean, before we start looking at that, we need to get someone trained to do that job and what other, other essential tasks need to be performed.
So, basically, Tori's not issuing permits?
Um, I wouldn't say she's not issuing them, um, she can take them in via email and process them and, as Cindy is doing, you can stop in once a day, drop things off, pick things up. If they need to be brought into the, but Robert's not here, she can email them to Robert. We're trying to do as much as possible that way. When you come to taking payments or issuing a permit, then that's something that has to... Something has to change hands at that point. Everything else seems, uh, pretty smooth. I do agree, we need to all stop in periodically for whatever reason and maybe cover the office so that Tammy's not alone. Talk about that.
Ellie, you got anything on that?
No, I just, I, I think we need to alternate in the, when the, um, town is sort of, I, because we can't leave the, the open and the other one not sort of open. And we're not in total lockdown either, and that's better considering. You gotta, you gotta respond to the public to a certain extent, so... I know we said we can work more from home and I think that the staff is on a tremendous job in making that happen, technologically especially, but we can't, I, I just don't see leaving Tammy alone or Tammy or Holly alone on one side, no, no one, there's a backup on the other. Just think that's a major thing for...
Everyone had an agreement on that?
Just to not leave Tammy and Holly alone over on the other side.
Right, right.
I agree with that, I've said that a long, never should be in those of here.
So, do you want to leave it that the four people can work, rotate through when they're alone? So, there's always two people here?
Well, I mean, Tammy's people are Tammy's people.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, Cindy, Tori and Susan is always one person.
And is able to take calls.
Yeah.
So, again, so the problem's gonna be if T M E is...
Actually going to have to train someone.
You gotta make sure, you know what I'm saying, if you're always wanting two people in the building.
Coordinate between the four. That's what I'm saying, there's always two people in the building, is coordinate.
Yeah, between Tammy.
All the two.
Yes.
I think that's reasonable.
All right, anything else?
I had just one thing to support to the board's, um, attention to keep, now that the voters have spoken, um, seventy-nine E passed and that, that lea- leaves some requirements in the select board to set up criteria, but more importantly is the assessment for the high school. I think that needs to be looked at and properly assessed, so that, that's the first step. And I know we're having issues with K R T.
No, they're flawed.
But anyways, with that being said, I think we have to come up with a fair assessment for that high school. Um, I believe we can reach out to the school board, they had two, um, assess, two assess values and we should figure out what...
We have, we, we play for half of those. And we should have copies there at the town hall. If not, we can bet on the copies from the student and then...
Not to nominate diversity, which is fair, but, uh, there is someone with extensive inside knowledge of that entire process, so I think would be a great point person on that. You're hearing silence, Ellie, 'cause we're talking about you.
Well, some of the disadvantages of not being here and zooming in.
You knew you were gonna get volunteered for something tonight, didn't you?
I, I, I did not hear that, I really didn't hear that. You, what, what do you want me to volunteer for that you're assigning me?
So, since seventy-nine E has passed, we need to sit down and take those two appraisals and get a actual value for the seminary campus.
Okay.
Um, so that we can have a basis for seventy-nine E to take place or for what kind of taxable rate that we tax that.
Okay, but I believe the way it works is we would have to give a current assessment and we had the two appraisals have been done within the last year and a half. And like, what I talked to Tori about, establishing an amount or do, I, I have no idea how that works. I'm happy to do it, I just don't know how it works.
It has to go to our assessor, doesn't it?
Yeah, it has to go to the assessor.
So, should you, do you want me to tell our assessors that we need that to be done now? I mean, is that how?
I don't think they have a P and S done yet for their property, but...
And he has to divide it?
It's challenging.
Yes.
Excuse me, Kevin?
He's gonna, so, we're basically asking if you can work with K R T on that to, to come up with an assessment based on those, those two appraisals.
Okay.
They are out of their office until April seventh.
Soon to be April thirtieth. Uh, yeah.
Right, everyone will be out during, uh, April, yeah.
That was one thing I forgot.
I would like to try it, too.
Um, as far as I'm concerned, there's no reason why those guys can't be working. K R T, they work out of this office, they work outside, so...
Well, they're supposed, they're supposed to be going in house those appraisals, but they should at least be here for some business.
Yeah, and, and...
Well, do you want to invite all kinds of people inside?
It's true, too.
Inside here?
Yeah, 'cause he has people come in to see him.
Right, and that part is okay, but they should be able to work remotely to certain things.
Outside.
Yeah.
You don't wanna be dragging all kinds of people aside of them.
No.
No.
He can answer calls, he can get into our system and make changes, and.
I'm just saying, if we're paying them on a monthly basis, and they're closed this month, are we paying them?
Shouldn't be.
I don't think so, I don't, I say no.
No, they're closed by their decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't be paying them.
They're closed, they're not working, no.
Circumstances that apply to them.
It depends on whether they're on, on the list that we fix, it's legal to work.
But still. Floris and Tattoo Powell, no, Tattoo Powell's and Handdress, I think are the only.
They're in Massachusetts, but I don't think there's that many differences, or I can call them and if one of you wanna do it, and just make sure that they are even.
Say we wanna know how they can justify not working. Well, either not working or not charged.
Or not charged, it's.
That's the difference.
That's all I have.
So, you don't work for much, and then, and for April, then those two months, we shouldn't be charged?
Well, it hasn't been a full month yet, but.
Okay, all right. Well, we need to allocate electronic copies of both appraisals to have available, to transmit accordingly. You've got started, for sure.
I think we got everything. Uh, that will conclude the televised portion of this evening's meeting, appreciate everybody bearing with us for the new technology that we're trying to incorporate. And stay safe, thank you.
Bye, Glenn.
Well, we're going in with non-public.
Hey, Ellie.
Bye.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it running, I just wanna make sure we have the message.
It says recording.
I'm trying a little the volume, you're doing.
Hang on, if anyone can hear me, sorry, the, uh, thing just, my phone just stopped working, you, you guys are clear.